Good evening. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica for November 10, 2014. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Neill is excused. Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember DeGruy?
Present.
Protem Irving?
Present.
Mayor Nyheart?
Present. And the salute to the flag will be led by Mayor Protem.
Karen Irvin.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a closed session report.
No reportable action?
Okay. That brings us to the consent calendar.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Mayor Protem?
A second.
Sorry, I have a quest statement.
And Councilmember DeGruy has a comment.
Yes, on number six is it, or eight, the last, no, it's number five. They could add Golden Gate Regional Center because Regional Center knows where all the group homes are for disability. If they could add that to the outreach, they're going to outreach to everybody.
This is authorization to move forward on the
That's the bus.
Ability of seniors, yeah.
The senior
Grant, just to let them know that we're doing this?
Right, so to include the Golden Gate Regional Center, they have all the addresses of any group homes within the City of Pacifica.
We can reach out to them, you bet.
Okay. So that doesn't change the proposed action any, so do I have a, I have a motion and a second, please vote?
I don't know if my vote registered.
And that passes for, with one absent. There are no special presentations, there are no public hearings, so that brings us to council communications. And we're going to start council communications just a little teeny bit differently with, our city manager has an announcement. I'm yielding some of my time.
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. City Council, I am City Manager Lori Tinfo, and I'm very pleased tonight to introduce to you the newest member of our staff, and if I could have Lorenzo, you go up to the podium. Today is Lorenzo's first day. He is joining us as the Assistant City Manager, and he will have responsibility for finance, information technology, and human resources, among a bevy of other responsibilities. And he joins us coming most recently from the City of Lynwood, Washington, where he was the Finance Director, but he has a wealth of experience going back many years, including working for the state of California. So I wanted to make sure that he was introduced to the council and the community. We've done press releases, I think the newspaper is picking up on it, we're very glad to have him. And if you will bear with me, I did say that if he would like to make any comments, he could do that as well.
That's fine.
Great.
All right, Mayor Nyheart, members of the council. Again, thank you for having me here, and I look forward to working with you all and moving the city in the direction that you want to move it into. Just briefly about, a little bit about my background, I have about 25 years in the financial realm. About 10 of those years are, have been, I've been managing administrative services, and that includes finance, information technology, and HR, and various other things that need to be taken care of. So I look forward to bringing all those experiences and talents to bear, and helping you all move Pacifica in the direction that you want to move it into.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mayor Nyheart. Didn't have a lot of committee meetings this, in these last couple of weeks, but we do, we had our economic development meeting pushed back, and that's going to be next week, so might be reporting back on that. So it's the 17th at the police station at 6:00 PM, for anyone that's interested. Also, we have a couple of calls out for some of the various committees, so if you're interested in serving on some of the committees, we're putting out for applications, so you can take a look at the city website and see what's available, and might be able to apply, so that'd be great. And then the last thing is, I just want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day tomorrow, and hopefully you can enjoy it with your friends and family, and celebrate all of our veterans. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Okay, it was a relatively quiet time for me as well, but I did want to start out by saying congratulations to all of the elected council members that are going to be serving in the next term. Welcome to John Keener, and congratulations to Sue DeGruy and Mike O'Neill. It's going to, we're looking forward to working together and having a productive and successful four years to come, so I'm really grateful. And I'd also like to thank all of the councils, all of the candidates that ran. It takes a great deal of work and energy and commitment to this city, and I think it was really noble and impressive that you got out there and did your best, so it is very much appreciated that you, you were out there and did that, so thank you as well to you guys. And so we had a beautification committee meeting, and unfortunately, we didn't quite have a quorum, so that's going to have to wait till next month, although we will be determining the mayor's, the Pacifica Pride Mayor's Award, and that should be coming up in the next city council meeting, so that should be very exciting. And then also, I attended, I was invited by Courtney Conlon and the Chamber, they escorted some travel writers to Pacifica, and they brought them around to the different restaurants, and showed them around town, and we took a hike up on Devil's Light Trail, and they were all so incredibly impressed with the beauty and the breathtaking vistas of the trail, and it was great to show them around and be part of that. So I really want to extend my appreciation to Chamber for, you know, demonstrating what a beautiful town we all live in. It was a great, great event.
Thank you. Councilmember DeGruy?
Yes, I want to reiterate to everybody who did run for council, it always enables the public to become more engaged, and thank you to the public for being engaged. I did attend the library's wonderful event for the Day of the Dead, I won't try my Spanish, and it was a great event, that they used both top and bottom of the library, and it was all ages, it was very colorful, very musical, it was very well done, much appreciated. The economic development was already mentioned, open space normally meets on the second, or the third Wednesday, and what is wrong with that?
I lost my place here.
On the 12th is the Coastal Commission is meeting in Princeton, and the open space committee usually meets on the 19th, and I think we were talking about having interviews, so that would be a conflict. I didn't get back to Kathy on that interview, because that has some openings on the open space, so I think you asked for us to meet for interviews on the 19th.
That's correct. I haven't had that confirmed by all the council members.
That's the day the open space meets.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you. I think that's it, there's not much going on. Oh, yes, the veterans, absolutely. The veterans did have their veterans' breakfast, they cook breakfast, and they do that every year, it was a great event as usual. It's a very nice time for veterans to get together and sit down and to talk with the other people that are willing to come and listen to our history, it's very fascinating, very enjoyable, so next year, tune in for that, it was very well done. Thank you.
Okay. And just a couple of quick things, since I yielded some of my time. Don't forget Council of Cities, for those of you that want to go to Port de Hola Valley on the 21st. There will also be a couple of dates that I need to make sure people are aware of. First of all, congratulations to Sue, and Mike, and John Keener, and welcome to the council, and we will be doing the reorganization on the 10th of December, and so it will have its own night, as usual, so I want to make sure people knew that. And congratulations to everybody that won and stood up, that's awesome, because that's always a part of, you know, getting involved and getting messages out there, so thank you. The travel writers, I actually did the beginning of that, and did the welcome, the first night at the castle for the travel writers, so, and people, I talked to a number of them, were from literally all over the West Coast, so, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little feedback from the audience, I'm trying to understand if it's us or you guys on the camera. Okay, thanks. With that said, one last thing, I just wanted to remind people that as we move into the holidays, and sort of starting with Veterans Day, the purpose of those holidays sometimes gets lost in all the festivities, and I was so struck by that when we did our own service today at the Veterans Affairs Medical Center. We had many people there from throughout the county and through the city, and what was really poignant is the veteran's stories, and listening to the stories, and why, why we really owe them so much. So just as we go into each of these holidays, let's start with tomorrow, and remember the purpose of the holiday, because that purpose was really about people who left their families, left their friends, left their homes, and served in a way that many people would never ever think of doing. And it cost them the very most, in some cases, that you can give, and that was their lives. So just keep that in your mind tomorrow, that we're honoring all of our veterans, but we're honoring those we've lost as well. And with that, I want to, does anybody have anything else?
No.
Okay, I'm going to bring it to the last thing on the agenda tonight, which is oral communications. And I have a number of cards, and just because I have people here wanting to speak about a particular issue, I want those folks to stay after, because we have some added information for you, and that's the motor home issue. But in this particular section, it is an opportunity, and you can see it on the agenda, there is a portion of the agenda that's set aside for people who can speak on something that isn't on the agenda for the council, so it has to be something that's nowhere else on the agenda. That persons wishing to address the council shall be recognized and speak during this section, provided however that, that those only, those things are on the agenda, I already said that, and it's in here twice. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any of the members thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with the speakers under oral communications, and a maximum of three minutes will be given. You'll see little lights come on in front of you, the green is, gives you two minutes, the yellow means you have a minute left. Don't stop just because you hear the click, stop when you're done. And of course, when the red light comes on, I have to call you to order and move to the next person. Boisterous, impertinent, slanderous, or profane comments should be avoided, and actually are disallowed, and if you don't stop, you can actually be barred from participating further in the meeting. So with that, I want to, I have a number of cards here, if you haven't turned in a yellow card and you want to speak on something, please do, but I have Linda Hayden, followed by Maria Orpeza, am I saying that right? And it says Linda M., we're gonna, oh, it's Linda Mendoza, thank you, all right. Those are the three, if you guys could line up, and Linda, you're first at the podium. You can pull that mic down so we can hear you, yeah, and also, you've got to speak loudly for the camera.
Okay. We the citizens would like to propose a city ordinance to stop people from living in their mobile homes on our public streets and parking lots. The City of Pacifica needs to prohibit overnight parking of oversized and recreation vehicles from parking on public streets and public parking lots between the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM, and prohibits parking any such vehicle within 50 feet of an intersection at any time. Residents shall obtain a temporary overnight recreational vehicle permit, TORVP. If they are parked more than 24 hours, a resident needs to obtain a 72-hour permit in a seven-day period, which allows parking of these vehicles on public streets within their block. This proposed permit would be free of charge to the resident of Pacifica and may be obtained by phone or by email with the registration of the vehicle license plate and property resident address. This is similar to the San Diego Municipal Code. The City of Pacifica needs to monitor public streets and public parking lots such as Lindamar Beach and Park and Ride locations. Pacifica needs to state no overnight parking at these and similar locations. Lindamar Beach. Presently, the parking program at the beach is from, paid parking is from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. What happens at 8:01? It should read, no parking between the hours of 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM, Pacifica needs to state no overnight parking. At the parking lot locations, lots are for commercial parking, from, I'm sorry, for commuter parking and not, and not available for residential, commercial, or long-term parking for, or for recreational use. Pacifica needs to state no overnight parking, as they did in other cities such as Marin and Los Altos, no parking between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 PM. The other issues, concerning issues in our community are dumping of sanitation, waste, noise issues, obstructions of views. There have been many complaints called to the police, but no one has been able to enforce this issue. It is time for us to now make a difference in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria, and followed by Linda Mendoza, and then Tree Stire.
Good evening, city council members. As you well know, we've been dealing with this motor home issue for months. A number of us have called the police numerous times. There is an ordinance in place, a municipal code, that prohibits people from sleeping in their vehicles overnight, from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Every time I call the police department, I get a different reason as to why the person is not being cited. Now, I have taken a number of pictures of this motor home, because obviously, he knows the 72-hour rule, all he has to do is move down the street, and that's it. He's got his registration current, so he knows how to play the game, except he is sleeping there overnight. One of my personal favorites in the pictures is him having a barbecue. He had a guest over, and they had, he had a propane tank out and a barbecue. And I remember calling the police that day, I don't know what happened with it, I'm not going to sit there and stalk the guy. But it is pretty funny to drive by and see different guests coming with their pets, the dogs run off leash on the hillside, they probably do their business, don't clean it up, who knows where those ashes go. Anyway, that's probably enough issues with that. I'm a huge believer in the broken window theory. I'm assuming since you're city council, that you probably know what that theory is, and I believe he is the broken window in the neighborhood. And when you allow one, more will come. And I already have a picture of a van of another guy that's sleeping on Roberts Road. He puts up his little screen in the front windshield, spends the night there. They, I guess, apparently know the rules too, that they have to move every 72 hours. All they have to do is roll down the hill, big deal, right, they're still there. Number of motor homes, like Linda mentioned, tonight, I drove by the Samtrans Park and Ride, parking lot, there was a huge trailer parked, there was a woman throwing stuff in a box, and she walked over to the Goodwill box from the trailer and dumped it there. And we know they're not supposed to do that. So obviously, this is a huge issue in Pacifica, and we know that it's just going to continue if something's not done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. And Linda Mendoza?
Hi, good evening, thank you for this opportunity. My concern
I want to pull that mic down further.
Sorry.
There you go.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My main concern is with the main motor home dubbed the Blue Whale. Don't know if, you know, they park near, near schools, don't know what these people's backgrounds are, should they be near, near children, they do sleep overnight in it. I have photos of them carrying two propane tanks on top, and two jerrycans for gasoline on the back, one of them somewhat stuffed with foil, not, I don't know what that's for, don't know if it's gasoline that they're carrying. All the windows are boarded up with, with plywood, don't know where they're dumping their waste, don't know if they're, if they have no ways to dump, then where are they going to the bathroom, where are they cleaning themselves? They have a couple of dogs, I understand, I also understand that they order delivery from Roundtable quite often. Therefore, if they have money to order Roundtable pizza, they should be able to have money to park over the San Francisco RV parking lot. The municipal code for Cali, for Pacifica, that does state it's a use of automobiles, campers, and trailers for human habitation, actually, Section 4-7.1112 regarding to trailers, no person shall stand or park any trailer as defined in Section 630 of the vehicle codes of the state, and with the wheels thereof either attached or detached upon any public street, avenue, highway, lane, alley, court, or public place within the city for a period of more than 12 hours in any one day. And the human habitation, which is part of Section 4-71, 7.1114, they shall, shall mean the intentional establishment of a temporary or permanent place of human occupancy, purpose for overnight lodging is prohibited. Limitations of this is no person shall use, occupy, or permit the use of occupancy of any automobile, truck, camper, motor home, et cetera, for human habitation on any public property, including any park, beach, square, avenue, alley, other public way within the City of Pacifica between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This is part of our own going on. I, I'm really, my main concerns are for the safety of us, the community, and also possibly the safety of them. I too have a number of photographs that I've taken, they're yours if you want them.
If the, if you guys would hang out afterwards.
Sure. Thank you. Oh, and we're not here to
Thank you.
Work against, okay.
Thank you, absolutely. Tree Stire, followed by Ron Makel and Walter Williams.
Yeah, good evening, council members and staff. I just want to add to what these other people have been saying, because I did go to the planning department, they didn't have a code enforcer at the time, and they said, oh, no, they're perfectly legal, they can do what they want. Well, they can't. And I happened to even give them the license number, which I'm going to give you tonight, because I tried to connect with the motor vehicle, but they wouldn't give me any information. The number is 1GUZ889, California, and now they removed it. So that definitely is illegal. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because my son got a ticket in his own apartment parking lot, and then the police sent him a letter and said, oh, it should be $54 instead of this money. You know what? He's, he's a veteran, he's parked in his own property, he should have got a warning. And this guy here has been going around for months, living on the streets for nothing, dumping his garbage no matter where, probably causing a fire with his propane gases and so forth. But not only that, it isn't fair to the people in the, in the mobile parks that have to pay $72 a night. It just isn't fair, and it's discrimination, and it should be taken care of. The other thing I want to comment on is the last council meeting under oral communications, I just want to make one correction, and they didn't mention the last name Kathy Mee, it should be M-E-E-H, and not Kathy O'Connell or any, any other Kathy, so that needs to be corrected. The other thing is, for all the people that are so interested in about not having our highways widened, or widened, or whatever, they had a Transportation Authority meeting, which Karen Irvin reminded us of, and only three people from Pedro Pointe showed up, Chris Hunter, Don Horsley, Eric Rusheims, and I, and the three people from the TA, so so much for their interest in the highway. I also attended the other Transportation Authority and asked for update on our highway widening, so hopefully I'll get an answer. I also attended the Veterans Summit at the Crown Plaza, and we had no representation there, and I'm really surprised, since you work at VA Hospital, and, and Sue DeGruy is also concerned with military moms. Thank you.
Ron Makel, followed by Walter Williams and Martin Anaya.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and Mayor Protem and council. Congratulations, Sue, really, and Mike O'Neill, wherever you are out there, and Mr. Keener. So it's going to be interesting to see how things going. Very confident Sue will not have any problems. Anyway, what I'm here for, first I want, a good note is, I just want to, because we're talking about veterans, and want to remember the people who've really sacrificed themselves. Today is National Marine Corps Day, 1775, the Continental Marines was established later to become Marines 239 years ago, so I thought that'd be an interesting thing to bring out. Also, it is National Forget Me Not Day, so let's not forget our veterans, okay, let's keep that in mind. But what I'm here for, on a more serious note, it has to do with wildlife, especially deer, getting killed on the highway, and this is something I've wanted to bring here, I'm embarrassed to say, for several years, but I have a little thing I want all of you to look at. You have these signs here, ones from Highway 92, ones on Skyline Boulevard, just north of Sneak Lane, but these, those two roads where these signs are, they're same size as our highway out here, but I'm going to, I want you all to take a look at this.
Then maybe give it to the city manager, should he use this as pushing forward to see if we can get the city
Back in there, so the public can hear you outside. Yeah.
Anyway, what I want is, I'd like to see the city get Caltrans to put some signs up, okay? I would say, we probably average about half a dozen of deer easy a year or more, this year, the last few years have been more because of the drought, so the deer are coming down, but normally, it happens during the rutting period, but really, this is a serious thing, and I think we need to do it. And it's also a matter of public safety too, as you know, someone hitting a deer can cause a lot of, you know, course damage to the car, and also to the person. So anyway, there you go, give that to the city manager, and I'll follow up with that with Lori, and find out if, what we can do about that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And Walter Williams, Marty Anaya, and Tiggaris. And I do that wrong every time. Tiger jazz.
Yes.
Ugh.
Hello, city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Honorable council, my name is Walter Williams. I own a nonprofit named Pioneer Public Foundation. Its mission is to provide transitional housing for those persons who might otherwise not be able to afford higher rental fees in Pacifica. I also have a for-profit enterprise named Plantasia.
Mr. Williams, can I interrupt you? It sounds like you're saying something really important, but I, I can't hear you.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay.
Is that, there we go, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I live in, or until recently, I lived in the SFRV Park at 700 Palmetto Avenue, it's funny that this is, RVs are, are being mentioned here, in Pacifica. I also have, oh, okay. I own the, until recently, I owned the RVs at four sites, Site 181, Site 141, Site 130, and Site 129. Excuse me. I've lived there for three years. Mr. Lynn Ottley was the manager until one month ago, and under his management, this arrangement was fine. The tenants paid me for the rental of the RVs, and I in turn paid the rent to the SFRV Park. In fact, he promised me I could have more sites after the summer high season. This was all upended in October, when Mr. Ottley was transferred to become manager of the Yosemite property of Encore Corporation, the owner of the SFRV and Yosemite Properties. Taking his place in SFRV, in the SFRV property was Kate Hensley. When I went into the office to introduce myself the first week of October, her introduction to me was, you will have to move or sell your RVs. I said, why? And she replied, because you are not allowed to do business in the park. I replied, well, it was okay with Lynn, and, and in fact, he granted me vendor, vendor status, as I was going to put it in a deli in the storeroom area adjacent to the office. She said, never mind. There is nothing in the rules of conduct put out by the SFRV resort that prohibits my providing transitional housing to those who need it. She has not, she has put my former tenant in Site 141 out and forced him to get a tent. The wind blows through it at night, there, he has no television, no electricity, et cetera. By the way, By the way, 141 is the best property on the site. I paid dearly for it. I tried to pay the rent for November on site 141 and my money was returned to me. Electricity to 141 has been cut off on, has been cut off. On October 19th, I asked Kate again, why can't I stay here? She replied, because you have to be the owner of the RV. I replied, Kate, I do own the RV.
I'm going to let you finish because we took a little time getting sorted out here at the beginning.
Okay, I just have half a page more. Okay, thank you.
Try to be very short.
Thank you very much. She says, well, I'll keep looking for you, but I have no place for you now. She has taken over my transitional housing, made my tenants move, and given me three different reasons why I can't remain there. I believe I am the victim of racial and business discrimination of the most egregious, egregious sort. I would like the city council to investigate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Marty Anaya and followed by Tiger Jazz. And Tiger Jazz is my last card.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad I got to go before Tiger Jazz because he's a hard act to follow. He, by the way, has been a guest at our TV telethon and that's the reason I'm here tonight is to tell you all about the upcoming Red Carpet TV telethon for which you are the star. And of course, you know that this is a fundraiser for Pacifica Community Television and we're very, very grateful for the support. Mike O'Neill, in fact, has been just very instrumental. He says he might even get a few of you to come out as auctioneers this year. So with that thought embedded, I do want to say again, thanks to the community. This is going to happen on Saturday, the 22nd and 23rd. And I'm very excited to tell you that, you know, every year we do this thing and we raise these funds and we always hear a lot of bad news about, oh, you know, this organization or that is on the precipice and goodness gracious, are we going to make it another year? Well, I've got good news for you and that is that thanks, in large support, in large thanks to the support from this council and from this community, we now have a brand-new HD studio that we will be unveiling on the 22nd Saturday at 5:00 at the start of our TV telethon and auction. So I want to encourage everybody to watch and bid because we're going to have some fantastic auction items right now. I just got a word just on the way down here that a casino is going to be donating evening stay plus chips plus all kinds of cool stuff, including food and so forth. So there's going to be a lot of fun reasons to support, but none the least of which because your support has really meant something and has really made a critical difference in our ability to help people communicate and to help all of our, all of our community stay interconnected. And I won't wax on anymore about that interconnectivity. Maybe that'd be a conversation for another time. But again, thank you very much and we hope to see you on the 22nd and the 23rd.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Tiger Jazz. And that's my last card.
Good evening, council. Tiger Jazz of Pacifica. I do believe Marty is the hard act to follow. That Saturday, 22nd and the 23rd is the telethon, Marty? It's a great auction. I've bid on items there. I got my friend some chiropractic work at a great price and I got an amazing deal on some advertising for my book when that came out. So if you're looking for holiday gifts, that's a great place to do it. Not why originally came up, but it's a really cool event. Just while I was listening to the motor home stuff earlier, a couple of thoughts occurred to me. I didn't know it was going to be discussed tonight, but, and it sounds like there's a big problem for some people with some huge motor homes taking up space when they should probably be finding a place for themselves to rent. But while I was listening to it, the two things that occurred to me was that, or were. So when I go traveling, when I do my road trips, every so often, I just like to go up the road alone. And at times, that means that it gets late at night, I get tired, I want to take a nap so I don't crash into somebody. The thought that occurred to me was, well, needs need to be addressed also. I want to make sure that any ordinance that's written doesn't exclude people who, you know, are traveling and they need to pull off the side of the road rather than get into a major accident. And the other thing that occurred to me was, I was in a situation recently in which a friend of mine who had a very particular health disability was needing a place temporarily to stay. And what she was hoping to do was to hang out in front of my house in her car for like a week or two while she was figuring out her transitional point. And while I very much wanted to be able to say yes to that, she was the one who brought up that she would rather not hang out in front of my house for a couple of weeks, just, you know, in front of my house, because she was afraid of the law sending her elsewhere and she didn't want to be harassed by the law, which occurred to me as being an odd thing that I couldn't allow somebody in front of my own house for a short period of time while she was in a tough spot in her life and getting something together in her life. And that brought up an issue that there are many homeless people who are in tough transitional places in their life, not a longstanding, I'm going to be camping on public streets for months and months with huge obnoxious trucks, but they need, they have that transitional period in their life and it's illegal for them to be able to sleep overnight somewhere where they're not really being a nuisance or obstructing anything. And so as I was hearing about the problem at hand, I also wanted to bring those thoughts to the table because they seem like they might be relevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, the amazing thing is we have no items for consideration. So I thank you all for coming tonight. And for those that wanted to talk about the RV stuff, we'll meet for a little bit afterwards just to update you on some things with the city manager. Please have a happy and safe Veterans Day and remember what I said about veterans. Thank you.